Welcome to the October 7, 2025 council meeting. I hereby call the meeting to order. Members of the public may attend the city council meeting in person or may watch or listen remotely by viewing the meeting on Channel 8, WCTV, at the city's website at weizetta.org. Public comment during the public forum and/or public hearing portions of the meeting may be provided in person at the meeting, in advance, or by logging into the Teams call and raising your hand during the public hearing. When your name is called in the meeting, you will be seen and heard in our council chambers and on the cable channel. You will be asked to unmute, turn your camera on, and then you may begin your comments. All public comments must include your full name and address. The first item is actually the swearing in of our new council member. And so we're going to do that first. And our new council member is Dan Cook, returning to office after a five-year break. He was appointed in our last meeting, which was two weeks ago. And we will do his formal swearing in so that he can act on the city business. And I would ask Dan to approach the dais, and our interim city manager will swear you in. And then we'll take a brief moment to take pictures for Dan, and then we'll move on to the next agenda item.
Let's make sure that everybody can hear that. Okay. For the city manager, this is always kind of a fun thing. We don't often get to appoint our bosses, our leaders, to a position. So I'm excited about this. Are you ready?
I am ready.
Okay. I'm going to break it up as much as I can.
All right. Please do.
I state your name.
I, Dan Cook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of city council member.
The duties of the office of city council member.
In the city of Weizetta.
In the city of Weizetta.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
John, come on up. I think we'll take a picture up front with you, Dan, and your family, and then the council will join for a brief picture, and then we'll move on.
Yeah, I've got my family represented.
Yeah, your conciliary.
He's only lived in town for about 55, 60 years. It's not getting better than that.
Well, no, we just get the council to join real quick, and Mike and Aurora, someone can grab your camera. We're off. We've got one more picture. Because we don't have a picture of the council now.
Oh, we do.
Yeah, well, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. It's all good in here. Aurora, Mike.
Just one council.
No, 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 let's just put her in. Put her in. Be efficient. Welcome, Dan.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. The second item on the agenda is the pledge allegiance. If I could ask everyone to stand if you're able for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, the next item is roll call. Let the record reflect that the entire council, including our new council member, is present. Earlier this evening, the council participated in a workshop and discussed the following items. We received an update from staff on the Weizetta Bar and Grill remodel project, and we had an update on our council-led interim city manager and permanent city manager recruitment and placement process. With that, we'll move on to the agenda. The next item is to approve the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda as is, or would anyone like to make changes?
I'll make that motion for you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That passes. The next item is the public forum. We've got several items for the public forum, which is both unusual but very special, because this is one of my favorite nights where we talk about new employees, swearing in new firefighters. And also, we're going to recognize one of our longest-established businesses tonight. So the first item on the public forum, which a lot of you are here for, is the swearing in of firefighters. James Botham, who I believe is a legacy firefighter, meaning multiple generations. Mickey Leas, am I saying that correctly? A nod from somebody. And Cooper Rasmus. City manager, will you do the honor and with Chief Claprick or taking us through the swearing in of these new firefighters?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council. I'm going to let Kevin introduce each of the firefighters. I'm going to wander over there to swear them each in. I believe he's going to go one at a time with them, and then we'll have a group picture afterwards.
Good evening.
Nope.
Just push, huh?
Thumbs up.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. And I just want to start out by saying thank you for allowing us to be here. This doesn't happen a lot, but it's nice when we get new people and we can come over and do this. So thank you for allowing us to be here. I want to say thank you to members of the public that are here, and I want to say thank you to the other firefighters that are here to support these three new guys. We've been doing this for probably, this is probably about the 20th year. The way the system works is we hire, they get hired, we put them on probation for one year. During that year, they spend a lot of time going to school. Firefighter one, firefighter two, hazmat, EMR class, things like that. All in all, it's about 225 hours. So the very first year is a kind of a busy one for them. But once they get through that, they become certified Minnesota firefighters. So as the interim city manager said, I'll call them up one at a time. I'll read you a little information about them. We'll swear them in. And then we're going to let, they get to pick who pins them the first time, which, glad I didn't forget. So.
Did you leave the ring?
First, if I could have James Botham and his dad, Brian, come on up here. So just a little information about James. James lives in Weizetta with his girlfriend, Sarah, their puppy, Amber, and their cat, Finch. Firefighting has always been part of James' life. His father proudly served on the fire department for over 35 years, including time as an officer. Growing up around the fire station and seeing the dedication of the department inspired James to follow in those same footsteps. He first joined the fire department right out of high school in 2008, where he served, he was with us for four years before taking time to focus on personal growth and new experiences. In December of 2023, James returned to the department with a renewed sense of purpose and passion for the fire service. Firefighting continues to be his true calling. James is actively working toward a goal of becoming a full-time career firefighter. Outside of the firehouse, James enjoys being outdoors, hiking, traveling, and spending time at the family's cabin. We're proud to have James back as part of the Weizetta Fire Department family and look forward to his dedication and heart he brings to the team.
I'm ready.
I'll ask you to raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, James Botham.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of firefighter.
The duties of the office of firefighter.
In the city of Weizetta.
In the city of Weizetta.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
So Michael, Mickey Leas grew up in Plymouth as part of the Weizetta and has been in the Weizetta community his entire life. He is the son of Scott in Maryland and brother to Jack. Mickey and his girlfriend Samantha currently reside in Weizetta. Mickey attended Weizetta High School before continuing his education at Des Moines Area Community College, where he earned an Associate of Arts degree and played college baseball. I think that's the reason why Jamie didn't want to play the game this year. He later graduated from Concordia University in St. Paul with a Bachelor of Arts in Sports Management, continuing his baseball career at the collegiate level. In addition to serving as a volunteer firefighter for the Weizetta Fire Department since April of 2024, Mickey works as a property manager for Boulevard Management and Advisory in Minneapolis. Mickey also serves as an assistant varsity baseball coach at Weizetta High School, having previously coached at Edidina High School for the 2022-24 seasons. A team player at heart, Mickey is passionate about community, teamwork, and continuous growth. He is honored to be officially sworn in as a member of the Weizetta Fire Department and looks forward to continuing to serve the community he calls home. In his free time, Mickey enjoys spending time outdoors, weekends at the cabin, coaching and watching baseball, and cooking and sharing good food with family and friends. Mickey Leas.
I'll ask you to raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Mickey Leas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of firefighter.
The duties of the office of firefighter.
In the city of Weizetta.
In the city of Weizetta.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Last but not least, Cooper Rasmus. Cooper has lived in Plymouth the majority of his life while spending a little time in Minnetonka with his mom. Cooper grew up with his mom and dad, Colleen and Joe. Cooper has four siblings, Emerson, Easton, Porter, and Vincent. Cooper's pretty sure he has Vinnie convinced to become a firefighter. Cooper attended Weizetta High School, graduating in 2024. Cooper played hockey for Weizetta for 14 years while attending the Weizetta schools. In his spare time, Cooper likes to spend his time with friends and family. He also loves being on the lake, going to the cabin, fishing, hunting. Cooper is very excited to serve the city of Weizetta for the next 72 years. I guess it's just many years.
Ready for this, Cooper?
Yeah.
I state your name.
I, Cooper Rasmus.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of firefighter.
The duties of office of firefighter.
In the city of Weizetta.
In the city of Weizetta.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
I was just going to say that I told all three of these that they'd had a chance to speak.
Love it.
And all three of them told me, absolutely not. Okay?
Bring them.
So I don't know if, I think we'd be doing good to get them up here for a picture and probably not speak, but.
Fair enough.
Anyways.
They report to you, chief, so defer to your judgment.
We can take just a couple minutes to do some pictures. But on behalf of the fire department, I just want to say thank you for allowing us to be here.
Yeah, and just before we break for pictures, it's not lost on me that we have two legacy representatives, which speaks volumes to the legacy and the service, the dedication that our fire team has to Weizetta. And thank you for answering the call. And what does that put us at in terms of number of people on call now?
We're at 27 of 30.
Very nice.
We're authorized to have 30. We're at 27 right now.
Okay. Before we break, anything that anyone else would like to share with the group?
I'll just say it looks like my number is still not at risk.
We're getting there, though.
Fair enough.
And just one thing I did forget to bring up, but I do want to tell you, I don't know how long your meeting is going to be, but most of these people are going to leave, and we're going to go over to the fire station and have cake. If your meeting gets over early enough and you still see vehicles over there, feel free to come on over and have some cake.
Very nice. Well, I don't think we need to take a recess, but just go ahead and gather and take your photos. We'll get out of your way and allow you to do that. And then just kindly ask that when you're done with that, if you guys are conversing, just do it in the hallway, because we have other business to get on to, but take your time and get the good pictures.
Yeah. Yeah, well, James is returning. Cooper's dad has been here for 27, 25, something like that.
I remember we're from 19.
What's your name?
You know, we've been really lucky. The lawyer moved back. And now 27.
Nice to meet you.
I've been one.
I've been one. I've always wanted, I mean, I've always thought it'd be nice to have a second one a year. You know? But.
He's always taken one.
Well, maybe one of these wives, that girlfriend. It's a man.
Smile, Cooper.
Your brother and sister are great. Congratulations.
Mayor? Can I make a card for you? Oh, thanks. Yep. So we'll hit you last, because we got two more. Last as in in this segment. Not last-last. All right, thanks again. If we can just take our conversation into the hallway, that'd be great. And across the way, appreciate you all. Save a piece of cake for Molly, please. Okay, so we still have two, actually, three more items on the public forum. The next is the introduction of a newer employee, Haley Hadblum. And I believe that's going to be done by our head of community development, Mr. City Manager?
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Alex Sharp.
Thank you, Mayor. Typically, the introduction would be hopefully the first time where a employee does a presentation or comes before a city council. However, as the council has been able to see from Haley's exemplary abilities already, she's had to fill in for me already at the last council meeting. So Haley, if you would please join us up at, truly, I mean, you can call me for it, travel, you know, across multiple countries and come back late. Haley has been with us for a number of months now, and her history is in both public and private. So she received, she has her undergrad and master's in landscape architecture, and originally started with the city of Plymouth around four years ago. She then transitioned into the private landscape architecture market. This was an attractive thing through the interview process, as one of the things that you will see out of particularly younger entries into this field, is the inability to read a site plan. And this has been something that has been just a godsend for me as we've come into this, is that Haley has been able to step into a role that can be both dynamic and ever-changing and very difficult to read these site plans, navigate the public process, go through a presentation, and essentially a book report every couple of weeks, and do so flawlessly. She's been a great hire, and I want to hand off the microphone for Haley to provide a little bit further introduction about herself.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thanks, Alex. That was really kind. I will keep my introduction a little short. My, like Alex said, my background's in landscape architecture, but I did have some introductory exposure to planning with the city of Plymouth for a bit and the city of St. Paul. I am excited to return to local government, especially in a community like Weizetta that I'm familiar with. I grew up in the city of Minnetonka, so in and around Weizetta a lot. Some additional personal connections is that I worked at a local restaurant in Weizetta for, I think, three years during undergrad, and I have a sister that lives in Weizetta as well. So it's exciting to be somewhere that I have some personal connections to and personal familiarity. Yeah, I started at the beginning of June, and everyone's been really welcoming and accommodating and kind and supportive. So there's a great culture here, and I'm excited to establish some roots and be here for a while. The other thing that I'd like to take the opportunity to address is my little elephant in the room, I guess. Shortly after accepting the role, I found out that I was expecting. So I will be on leave this winter, beginning probably at the end of the month. We're getting pretty close, so expecting a baby boy soon, and then I'll be back in the spring. So, yeah.
Welcome, and thank you for those introductory remarks. Any questions or comments from my colleagues for Haley?
Awesome.
Well, I will just say, you know, despite your slacker boss who didn't show up for work, you stepped into a complicated situation and a high-pressure situation two weeks ago, and you executed flawlessly.
Thank you.
And now you set the bar pretty high for yourself, but supreme confidence that you are going to be a strong contributor to our planning department, and you're very welcomed. And congratulations, by the way, on the baby boy-to-be, and we look forward to meeting your extended family when you return, but, you know, you'll still be with us for a few weeks, so thank you.
Yeah. Awesome.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you. The next item on the public forum is presentation of our exceptional customer service award to Youngsteads by Sarah Caliber from the Weizetta West Chamber of Commerce. I believe City Manager will tee us up, and Sarah, you'll be coming to the dais, right?
Yeah, I think you've teed it up already, so I'll ask Sarah to come to the dais and present this evening's award.
Not yet.
When it turns green, it works.
There we go. Green is good.
Green is good. Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for the time and opportunity in the forum. You mentioned setting a high bar that Haley had done. Well, there are a lot of businesses in this community, and particularly members of the Weizetta West Metro Chamber, that set the bar quite high. We are excited to present this award. this award to Youngsteads. Mark and Steve, if you'd like to come up, I'm gonna just share a few nuggets. I know that it's been a lot of public forum tonight.
Oh, take your time.
A few nuggets from the nominations, because the nominations are from patrons. They're not, they're not from other chamber members. They're actual customers. And one of them commented that these guys have kept their 2006 Toyota running. Now, why you wanna do that to somebody, I don't know, but this person is very proud of that. And then another one mentioned that they had had six different cars serviced over their tenure, always all with Youngsteads. And Steve and I shared this morning, or earlier today, a little bit about his dad, and they've been a longstanding member of the community. So on behalf of the Wayzata West Metro Chamber and Business and Estate Advisors, we are delighted to recognize you with this exceptional service award. Mark, Steve, congratulations.
Thank you.
Can we steal you for a quick picture?
Yeah.
You wanna say a few words?
Yeah, why don't you say a few words, then we'll pause for pictures.
So the thing that I try to do is when you come into my store, and I know a lot of you, I know the mayor, I know Dan, I know Mike, I know a lot of you people here, and what I try to do is I try to, I'm gonna learn what your first name is, and the next time you come in, you're gonna be greeted by your first name. That's important to me. I think it puts people at ease, because let's face it, when you come into the store, you're not there because you wanna be there, right? You need some help, and that's what I'm here for. And I've been, I've been working for Youngsteads for over 22 years, and we are a family-owned company, and our logo is our family serving yours. And we, I take that to heart every single day. So that's where I am.
Well, thank you. I mean, I don't know how many years I've been coming into your store, but probably the whole 29 years I've lived here. And I don't even wanna think about how many different cars have been through that bay, but everything you said is true, and you all are pillars in the community. You're often the first to step up to sponsor things, community events, you know, and you're a key Wayzata stakeholder and have been for... How long has your store been here? Forty, 50 years?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we appreciate you very much. Any other comments from my colleagues? Okay, we'll pause for a quick picture, and then we'll move on to the next agenda. No, no, stay right there. We can come right in front of the dais right here. It'll be a little bit better. Or you can even do it right here. You gotta get the Instagram worthy. Oh, right? Thanks, guys. Appreciate you. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Good to see you.
I gotta come in with my trailer next week, when we're done with Winani, so. All right, guys. Let's go. All right, so we're just gonna keep moving on. Mr. City Manager, do we have anyone on teams? And we do have one public forum. I would ask Dan Gustafson to propose the dais for your comments, please. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, Dan Gustafson, 1040 East Circle Drive in Wayzata. I just wanted to bring your attention to a small but important problem that I encounter every day as I leave Coldwell Banker at 235 East Lake Street, and that is that there is a parking sign along Lake Street that blocks the view as you, in between Coldwell Banker and Ventana, and makes that left turn kind of dangerous, in my opinion, and particularly, you know, when I'm driving a small or lower, lower car, my little convertible, I can't see. In an SUV, I can kind of see, probably in a big pickup truck.
You need to go to Youngsteads.
Yeah, I probably do need, I have a car there now. Don't get me started, so. And congratulations to those guys. They do a great job, so. But I just, I wanted to have the city put that sign on their list of things to look into and, you know, always try and propose a solution. You know, there's a lamp post there that you could put a blade sign or something on that would get it up out of, out of people's vision. So just, just wanted to point that out.
No, thank you for that feedback. Mr. City Manager, we'll just log that as something we'll look into?
We will. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is new agenda items. For council, does anyone have any new agenda items that they'd like to bring up in the future? Okay, hearing none, I'll move on to the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, and on the consent agenda tonight is approval of city council workshop and regular meeting minutes of September 9th and September 23rd, 2025, approval of the check register, approval of municipal licenses, adoption of resolution 40, 2025, appointing Aurora Jaeger as interim city manager, and that becomes effective tomorrow. Approval of our joint powers agreement with the Mihaa Creek Watershed District, approval of a purchase of a replacement generator for the city hall campus. So with that noted, I would accept a motion for approving the consent as is or making adjustments.
So moved, Mayor?
I have a second.
Second that?
Second with Mr. Cook. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. We have no official public hearing items tonight. We'll move on to new business. We have one item on new business tonight, and that is to consider approval of the proposal from MGT Impact Solutions LLC for executive recruitment services and authorization of the execution of professional services contract by mayor and interim city manager. So I'll just perhaps provide some context for this agenda item, Mr. City Manager, since this is somewhat of a council function, and anything I miss, I'll let you fill in the details.
I'll let this first slide go up, because you're probably gonna cover a couple of them.
Yeah, no, actually, I was just gonna give the context for this item, and then you can give the background. So back in July, after our then-city manager resigned for another community, the council formed a work group comprised of council member Sorenson and myself to address two things. One, the interim city manager process, which, which is bearing out the way that we outlined it in July, and then to work with the interim city manager to canvas a, a list of resources for placement for our, for our permanent city manager position, and working with outside council to make sure that we designed a fair and equitable process to all internal and external candidates. That work resulted in five respondents coming back to us, which then our little work group met to shortlist to three, and then four council members interviewed those three finalists and preferred one. And so tonight, what we're being asked to consider is, we had a workshop earlier tonight to make sure that our discernment process was, was fully articulated, everyone had a chance to talk about pros and cons and whatnot, and then bring it back for formal action tonight. And the action we're looking for is, is formal moving forward of approval of authorizing staff to finalize a contract with MGT. With that, maybe you can fill in a couple of details I may have missed, Mr. Interim City Manager, and then we can move down our process.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The mayor has touched on several of the items. Jeff left in July. I stepped in in July as well. We started this process for the executive recruitment search in early August. He mentioned there are five firms that we researched. Those five are listed on the screen. Subcommittee, as he mentioned, of council member Sorenson and Mr. Mayor narrowed that down to three firms, and as he mentioned, four of the council members were able to participate in an interview process on September 26th. And based on the consensus of that interview panel tonight, before you, we're asking you to consider the proposal from MGT Impact Solutions.
Okay.
Their proposal includes several steps to get us through that process. That process will take approximately 90 to 120 days. I've listed out some of the different items. The first item is obviously creating that position assessment and advertisement and brochure, which then would go out. Candidates apply, they're evaluated. Recommended candidates are then presented to the council, and the interview process is set forth, and then ultimately we would appoint a candidate. Let me back up one, one important piece in the bottom corner. The fee for this proposal is $26,500. The reason that I bring this forward to you tonight is, based on this approval, there may be additional services that may be requested as part of the overall discussion or negotiation with MGT. We would like to make sure that we incorporate those as we move forward with that contract, so that our attorney and MGT are aware of scope of services and its final plan. So if you have any additional services that you would like to consider, I would ask you to discuss those, and ultimately, we would ask for an approval of the proposal with those additional services and authorize staff and the city attorney to execute a contract, which would then be signed by the mayor and the interim city manager.
Okay.
And that'll stand for...
Yeah, questions of staff at this point? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for discussion. You know, who would like to start or weigh in with their point of view on this? Mr. Sorenson?
Yeah, I mean, I just, you know, to remind everyone, the reason we're talking about this tonight is because we decided at the start of this transition process that we would go, go through this process and look for some consulting help. And going through the process, I think they, MGT submitted a very compelling proposal. They, they, one of the things that was, I think, most impressive is that they have local leadership that knows our market and our community, but they have a national presence behind them. So I'll be supporting this proposal tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Sorenson. Mr. Plakas?
So I have a little bit different view, and my comments will have nothing whatsoever to do with the qualifications of the firm or the services they can provide. We have slightly different information now than we did a few months ago when we were first contemplating this, but to me, the city is not just a city. It is part of our community, and part of the culture, I believe, is that we have loyalty to the people that work here. I have seen nothing but the greatest of professional services provided by the entire staff from top to bottom, and I don't see that we need to spend this money now when we actually have internal candidates that I think would be very, very qualified. Loyalty goes both ways. You know, we expect and hope for loyalty from the bottom up, but I think there's also loyalty from the top down. So for those reasons, even though I understand that there are values to, you know, having options and considering some bit of due diligence to see what's out there, I still feel like we have a very well-oiled machine here in the city. We have people that have really done a great job for the city, and I just don't think we need to spend $30,000 or thereabouts when we're trying to find ways to, to limit our budget as it is. So I will be voting against this.
Thank you, Mr. Plakas. Other comments or input? Go ahead, Ms. McDonald.
Thank you, Mayor and staff, and also a quick thanks to council members Sorenson and Mayor Mellon for putting a lot of time and thought into these, this process, and how giving it that much consideration and that weight, I think, is appropriate for what, for what the role is for the community and the culture up here at City Hall. So I hear, I have a lot of the same sentiments as council member Plakas, and I really am grateful to him to, for calling all of that out in terms of loyalty going both ways. I was part of the group that did interview these three kind of finalists that council members Sorenson and Mayor Mellon put forward to us, and, well, I, I can see it both ways. I'm gonna adhere to the plan that we created 90 or so days ago and just feel confident that MGT is the right organization for this. They were one of the few, they were the only ones who I think really understood Wayzata and even brought up some of our local parks, and they just were really specific. So I'm confident that they, they get us, and I'm excited to have some, some new permanent leadership here in the city. So, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Cook?
Yeah, I, I appreciate council member Plakas' comments and, and agree with a number of them. I, however, as council member McDonald just stated, I kinda, I'll adhere to the process and continue down the process. I was part of the interviewing a couple of weeks ago, and will echo the sentiments about MGT. They were the most prepared, they were the most knowledgeable, took the time to understanding. They, they knew about Wayzata, as council member McDonald mentioned, like they, it wasn't just a five-minute read of our website and our mission and values. It was a deep dive and deep understanding of who we are. I think this process, there are some benefits to this process of, and looking at internal and external candidates, and I think I'm confident that this process will help us pick the best candidate for the position, which is an extremely important position for the city here.
No, thank you for all those pros and cons. You know, for good or for bad, in the 17 years I've been doing this, is my third city manager search, so I've actually been through this twice previously. You know, if you think about the standard package tends to be community engagement, recruitment and placement, and then some sort of organizational scan or assessment. And with that filter, I felt that MGT offered the right balance, a little bit lighter on the community engagement, heavy on the organizational scan, and very credible recruitment and placement. In my general business philosophy and government philosophy for top positions, whether it be police chief, fire chief, city manager, my personal perspective is that it's always best practice to go to the outside and encourage viable internal candidates to apply. And oftentimes in that process, an internal candidate is preferred, not always, but often. But that's the whole reason why you make that scan, and it is a high-profile position. You know, in the 17 years, years I've been here, this will be our fourth city manager, which actually, you know, compared to other communities is, is not that bad, actually. They average 10 years, three to five years in the role. We're a special community, and we have sophisticated and high expectations at every level of our value chain, in our stakeholders that we serve, staff, the public, businesses, et cetera. And for all those reasons, I support this process going to the outside, and then also with that encouraging internal candidates to apply for the position. We do have, you know, some very important, valued internal candidates that I hope, as they go through their discernment process, will opt in and compete for the job. With that, I think I hear a consensus to move forward with this contract, and I would accept a motion to approve the proposal from MGT Solutions and authorize our, our mayor and interim city manager, myself, to execute this agreement. Reason why it goes that direction is, as we all know, this is somewhat of a unique situation. Within our charter, this is one of the few, well, it's actually the only hire that the council makes. And for that reason, we had this committee and have this process that reflects that unique situation. So with that, I would accept a motion to approve the proposal and authorize the execution of professional services agreement. And then I have one comment that I'll add on top of that once I receive that motion.
Mr. Mayor, a question. Do we need to include in that motion the additional services?
Well, that's where I was gonna go. So, so as the sort of preamble sort of stated, I'd like to keep it clean and neat and tidy and say, hey, authorized to do this, and then we in our workshop, primarily I, want to advance a comp and class study, and based on advice we got from staff, I think we could take that as a second staff direction to authorize the new interim city manager, at her discretion, to... direction to authorize the new interim city manager, at her discretion, to determine if MGT or other resources would, you know, do the comp and class study. And the only thing that's changing would be advancing the timing. So it's budgeted for '26, it was going to be done anyway. All we're doing is just asking the interim city manager to pull that forward and contract for it. So it, to me, it's a motion for this. And then on a, you know, if you go back a couple of slides, I think the last one, right here. Now, where's the one where you say, you called a question about additional services?
Right at the top.
So, so there you go. That's why I'd like to take it down. Mr. Outside City Attorney, do you have any guidance on that? Because this isn't a contract, we're authorizing you to go negotiate a contract.
That's right, Mr. Mayor. And I guess the point of clarification I'd like is, if you go back one slide there, we'd be working on, from our standard professional services agreement that we have as a city that council is very familiar with, these would be the key terms that I would incorporate into that, including the fee. So as I hear you, Mayor, that, that additional piece of the comp study interim city manager, Jaeger, would advise on whether that's something we could do in addition to this?
Yeah, I mean-
Or we could do it using other resources?
Right, so we would empower her to, in addition to this process, to make a determination, a professional recommendation to council, if, if this firm or other resources that she's aware of, all we're asking is pulling forward the commencement of that work.
Right, right. In the, in the six items here we see on the screen, that would be inclusive in that $26,500 fee, right?
No, it would be in addition to. So we would have to add, add, so let me see if I can provide you the right con-
Yeah, I, I think I hear you on that.
Yep, so we had a comp and class study. It was scheduled for later in the year. Because of this hire, I'm, I'm just asking it be moved up and just authorizing in the same way we're authorized to negotiate this contract, to empower interim city manager Jaeger to determine if this firm or another firm would be part of a package, they'd come back to us and say it's MGT or it's XYZ firm, and then bring both contracts back or one contract back for final approval.
Fair enough, I got you on that.
Okay, so with that-
And to answer your question, City Attorney, these six items all are $26,500.
Right, right.
So I'll, I'll accept a motion to authorize staff to work with the mayor, to initiate a professional services contract with MGT, and authorize interim city manager Jaeger to make a recommendation to council if we would be tacking on the class and comp survey study to MGT or another resource and bring one contract or two contracts back for consideration and approval. So I would accept that motion.
I'd make that motion.
Have a second.
Second, Mayor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, wait, do you want to register?
You normally ask if there's any nays.
Well, do we have a nay?
Nay.
Okay, thank you. So that's been moved and seconded and approved. And now we'll move on to the next item, which is the city manager's report. So before we get into it, I've got two, I guess, in the spirit of recognition, two Wayzata milestones to recognize tonight. First is recognizing 20 years of service from the Lake Minnetonka chapter of the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution. Since their founding of this chapter in Wayzata in October of 2005, this chapter has been an invaluable asset. They've worked tirelessly supporting patriotic educational historic preservation projects across Wayzata and the surrounding area, including the widely popular Flying Pancake, you know, event. They also are working with us to put together a ceremony to represent our 250 year of our country next year. So with that, on behalf of the city, I want to extend my deepest thanks to this chapter for their 20 years of dedicated service, support, and outstanding contributions. And we will be passing along an acknowledgement to them via US mail for that. The second is the Foresome, a Greater Wayzata Area Business, celebrating this month 90 years of business. The history of the Foresome clothing store is deeply intertwined with the city of Wayzata. The Engel family has owned and operated the business now for six generations. The business was founded in Wayzata in 1935. The Foresome was established as this little clothing store on Lake Street, and the original founders were four teachers that left the teaching business, and they played golf, and that's why they call it the Foresome. They, they located the store in 1952 to 12 and 101, then moved into the Bay Center in 1967. Another interesting thing is another Wayzata institution started within the Foresome's four walls. Bob's Shoe Repair was actually an original part of the Foresome and opened in September of 1972, and then rolled out of the Foresome and became Bob's Shoe Repair in August of 1983. Another longstanding Wayzata business that I didn't even know until I was doing my research was originally part of the Foresome. The Engel family and the Foresome are intertwined. Ron and Lucille Engle both passed on, bought into the business in 1955. With Ron becoming the manager and partner, he became the sole owner, and a second generation was passed on to Gordy Engel, a 70-year Wayzata resident, Wayzata native, you know, playing and coaching football, Wayzata High School. He also, along with somebody in the audience here, was the co-owner of the Wayzata Bay Center for a period of times before selling it to Presbyterian Homes. And at the time, that was a major, major, major transitional gift to, to help the Wayzata move through a very challenging time during the Great Recession. And the town will be forever grateful to the Methuenberg and Engel family for, for helping us through that. A third generation now runs the business with Gordy, Gordy's children Nicole, Carrie, and Michael, who are now on staff there. They did depart from Wayzata Boo in 2009, but they, they're right up in Plymouth and, and they're, they're an enduring legacy. The Engels operating a business for 60 years and a business being open 90 years is truly an amazing accomplishment. And both organizations will be receiving a brief proclamation from the city. So I know both, all of us join both, both those organizations in continued success and their contributions to Wayzata. With that, I will turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations to both the Daughters of American Revolution and the Foresome. That's awesome. 90 years, I didn't, didn't know it was that long. I, I just have a couple of things. The first, I'd like to congratulate Aurora on the interim city manager. Congratulations.[1277.01][1277.01](APPLAUSE). Secondly, for those of you that haven't let Kathy Leirvig or myself know, if you'd like to attend the Chamber Person of the Year luncheon on Thursday, please let us know. I'm sure Becky would still let us register. So if you could, if you haven't, just let me know either way. The second, or the, the next thing I'd like to remind you of is the city's showcase event. Used to be our Public Safety Day or Touch a Truck Day. It'll be next Monday at 4:30, right out here in front of the City Hall and Fire Station Buildings. We'd love to see you there. Bring your kids, grandkids, et cetera. It'll be a really fun day. Hopefully, the weather will hold out. And lastly, I want to say thank you to the council for giving me the opportunity for the last three months. It has been a treat. I would, I will say, it's been awesome to bookend the last three months with short meetings. I, I don't know what happened in between.[1334.53][1334.53](LAUGHTER). But I've learned a lot. I appreciate your patience and your trust and your confidence. So thank you. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
I'm sure we'll all close with some, some affirmations for your service, Mike, but just want to open it up to any questions of the city manager. Mr. Pluckish, yeah?
I've got one. I was just curious, it's been many years now, but what's going on with Meridian Manor? Because it just seems like it's been dormant for too long.
Yeah, I'll give a quick update, and I'll, if I miss something, I'll let Director Sharbat in. We did grant them an exception in late August. Extension? Extension. In late August to their application that would have expired in September. That extension was conditional on the fact that they pay their past due bills by the end of October, and to date, they have not yet paid their bills. So we are awaiting either payment of their bills or the end of October for how to move forward.
So what happens if we get to the end of the month and they haven't paid their bills?
Then their extension is nullified.
And what happens to the project?
Project approvals would become null and void from that point on, and a new application would not be received.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. City Manager at this point? So, Mike, how many years have you been working at the city, including, you know, when you started at the, at the counter at the uni?
I'm in, I'm in my 36th year.
Well, I, I will say that your exemplary service the last 90 days in stepping up and helping steer and lead and provide continuity and, and structure to our staff and to the council was exemplary. And very much appreciate your service. And, you know, as we were reflecting in our workshop, we, we all were walking through somewhat of an unusual experience, right? Not bad or good, just unusual. And, and I think everyone, you know, including Aurora and everyone up here, I think did our best to, to handle everything with transparency and, and as much certainty as we could offer both the two of you as well as our greater staff. And so I just want to thank you for, for your service, Mike. You know, you guys have worked together for five-plus years, so it's not like it's, you know, a big change, you're just, you know, passing the baton like a race, you know? And, and I know the city under Aurora will continue to run flawlessly as we also start our process, I guess, effective tonight on, on placement. But I would open up to my colleagues to offer any other comments before we move on.
I'll quickly show some gratitude for Mike Kelly. Stability is, was, it was just a really nice, warm feeling in the, in, in a little bit of navigating some unknowns. So I thank you for that. I found a lot of comfort knowing that everyone in the organization knows you, so many of our residents know you, and you just know this town so well. I also wanted to say thanks for everyone's grace, like the mayor said. Sometimes conversations can be uncomfortable a little bit and, and, you know, but they're, they're necessary, and the grace you all have shown has been really admirable, so thank you.
Mr. Cook?
Yeah, I'll echo some of the sentiments that have been shared, but also, I mean, for as long as I've known you, you, you've always stepped up here at the city and done what people ask of you. And it's not just your knowledge of public works, I mean, you've got a deep knowledge of the entire city, and you're just such a huge part of it. So thank you very much for, for acting with, with, I guess, with integrity and grace and making it easy for the transition to you and now the transition to Aurora. And so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Sorenson?
Yeah, so Mike, I remember back 90-plus days ago, we were all in a situation of losing our, our city manager, our deputy going, I'm turning to leave, and we had about two weeks figuring it all out. And, and through a lot of discussion with you, you know, I think we came up with the best solution that we probably, that we possibly could have. So we appreciate you stepping up. It's been a heck of a busy summer, right? So we kind of ran you through the hoops quite well, I, I think. But I just want, you know, thank you for your service, and I don't think we missed a beat the whole time, which is quite impressive, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Pluckish?
I feel compelled to say something now.[1639.53][1639.53](LAUGHTER). But, no, I don't need to add to any of what was said, but it kind of feels like this is a retirement ceremony.[1646.78][1646.78](LAUGHTER). I mean, you're gonna be here tomorrow and the next week, so, you know, I would say that, that what happened here with you, the few months and all that, is just an example of what I said earlier in the agenda, is we have such a great team here in the city. From the two people, three people that are sitting here, I'd see the police chief back there, we have such a great city here from the top to bottom. And we're so blessed to have you and so blessed for the community to have you as well. So thanks for all you've done.
You're welcome. I, I will say, it has been a busy summer. I have informed Aurora that I will be taking a vacation in a couple of weeks. It is strategically between council meetings, just in case.[1689.78][1689.78](LAUGHTER). But thank you for your kind words. I, I didn't step into this position for the huge pay that it worked out to be per minute, hour, or the extra hours.
By the side of the dais.
It, it was done for staff. It was 100% done for our staff to provide some normalcy and consistency and familiarity. So, thank you, it's, it's not a goodbye. I know that some of those did sound like it. I will be here tomorrow.
Excellent, excellent.
Thank you so much again.
Okay, is there anyone on teams for public forum?
There is not.
Hearing that, I would accept a motion for adjournment, please.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
All right.